Carol and Tom are in, or is that they're just coming in? It's Tom. Hello, Tom.
There he is.
See, Tom and then Carol's hiding over in the corner. Let's go ahead and get started and, uh, Gail, you undo the recall, uh, call to roll, I guess. It's Gail there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, it may take me a while.
That's all right.
Make sure when you're responding that you unmute yourself so I can hear you. Um, Hilda Foster? She's not here, right? Right, Gail Garrity here. Phyllis Brown? Tom Hagy?
I'm here.
Okay, cool. Ruth Ashton?
Here.
Virginia Whitaker?
Here.
Liz Carson? Oh, never mind. Linda Gallagher?
Here.
Carol Hicks? I saw her. John Holman? Jennifer Jones?
Here.
Freeze?
Karen is here. Oops, she just dropped out.
Beatrice Head?
Here.
Philip Seifried?
Here.
Mary Ann Grail?
Here.
Um, and let's see, I'm missing someone. Maybe that's it. Okay. And Jill Haynes is here. Sean Wyant, is he with us?
He said he wasn't able to come in.
Okay.
Okay, I just see a new caller came in.
Yeah, it's, it's me. I pressed the wrong button. Sorry.
And Alison Cruz. But I don't see her right now, so she may join at some point.
All right, well, is there anybody here that we didn't ask about? Just in case. Uh, so that takes care of the, uh, do we need to approve the minutes? Uh, Gail, you want to handle that, please?
Sure. I hope everyone had a chance to look over the minutes. Um, are there any questions about the minutes? Or comments?
They look good to me.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I also move.
Do I have a second?
And Linda?
Who is the second? Okay. All, any further discussion? Well, favors say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, the ayes have it. Um, do we have any public comments tonight? Any? Anybody? It's a call in or something we don't know about? You have a public comment? Okay, uh, let's go on then to Linda Collier's, uh, Friends of the Library report.
There is none because we could not have our April meeting. It was canceled.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this might be a short meeting. All right, Jill, you've got the floor as the library director then. Oh, no, wait a minute. Karen, what a, no, I skipped over a couple of things here. Uh, corresponding secretary Carol Hicks.
Thank you letter to Liz Carson. I sent a thank you letter to Liz Carson for her service on the board.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have to report.
All right. Karen, you have a treasures report?
Yes, we have a balance of eight hundred eighty-five dollars and fifteen cents.
Thank you. Uh, libraries report. Jill?
Okay, so obviously we've been close to the public, but we've been doing curbside. Not super popular, but the people who have used it have been very grateful. And obviously we've been doing a lot of discussion about reopening and we'll get to that new business. So unless there's anything in particular, um, the budget that the supervisors have up for the public to see that it's up for approval has a 2.5% cost of living increase for all county staff, including library personnel. And they did not fund the third circulation position that we were asking for, but we did have enough, somehow we have extra in our part-time budget more than that we would, not extra, but more than we would need for the 2.5%. So it's not as much as we asked for, but it is enough that we could do a third sixteen-hour position instead of a third twenty-four-hour position. So, you know, assuming the budget gets approved as it's presented on the website right now, I think we have some options in the next fiscal year. That will be very good. Yep, that's the big news. We'll get into the tough stuff and the new business.
Okay, and what kind of questions for Jill? Jill? Any questions for Jill? Any comments about what all cleanup and organization you've been doing, Jill?
Well, every single item has been taken off the shelves and they have been dusted. The tops of the bookcases have been cleaned. I don't know that that's been done since they were installed, so if you are someone who likes a dust-free place, at least it's been cleaned. We have weeded the entire library and so it's been a two-year process and normally it's a three-year process. So we were going to knock it out a whole lot faster and that's, um, opened up some shelves, some shelf space and it's our children's nonfiction collection, um, that the most common average age has raised to 2015. And before we did the weed this time around, it was early 2000s. So I think that's a really good thing that our nonfiction is up to date. Hi, Alison.
Okay. Committee reports. It's got Jennifer for the executive committee. Jennifer, you got anything for? We didn't have one last, this past time. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Yeah, nothing for executive. We skipped our meeting.
Then we've got the planning committee and it's got me down. Uh, we need to approve an updated strategic plan. And maybe Jill can talk to them a little bit and then we take a vote.
Yeah, so this is something for the newer members that we have to submit every year in order to receive our state aid. We submit it to the Library of Virginia and you'll notice that there are several parts that I had indicated I would update in July because they are, the numbers are based on the fiscal year that we are in right now. But the most significant changes that aren't just those basic statistics are in red. So if anybody has any comments. It's not a huge change. The planning committee met and, um, what you see is what we ended up with.
Any questions about what, I'm sure everybody read it in great detail.
There's really nothing significant. Um, we, in our statistics, under existing conditions, we added in that we do passport applications. Yeah. I took out some of the things that we had and the goals that we had accomplished.
No questions? Do I have a motion to approve it, uh, with the addition of statistical data and jingling?
Motion to approve.
I have a second.
I second. It's Linda.
Okay, who is the first? Uh, is that Jennifer? Okay. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. The ayes have it. So that's, uh, gets us up to date again. We have to do that every year.
All right, thanks, guys. That'll make my life easier when July comes.
Policy committee, uh, Gail, do we have anything? Any bylaw updates or anything?
Um, nothing has been done, but we do need to start thinking about, um, amending the policy, um, about the number and the composition of our board.
Didn't I send that out? Did I forget to send the edited document out?
I got that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Let's see.
I got that one.
Yep.
Yeah, you sent it.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
So do we need to vote on that tonight or do we? If everybody isn't familiar with it, maybe you need to resend it, vote on it next month. Comments?
I think, I think what was on is what we talked about, one member from each, um, one member from each district and then four people at large.
Yeah, that's what we talked about last month.
Any other comments? All right, group. I think we also talked about not firing anybody, but, uh, get that over attrition maybe. And do we need to, uh, two things, do we need to vote on that tonight? And if we do, uh, do we need to, uh, send a letter or something to the board of supervisors?
If they get to approve tonight, which would be helpful because then it would take effect in July, I will let the supervisors know because they do have some people or at least one person to, um, fill Liz's vacancy if you don't approve the changes.
So we have somebody willing to serve right now? Or do we know?
I know they have somebody that they want to nominate or appoint. That, that, that's all I really know. And, um, I just asked them to hold off until I found out what you guys were doing.
I guess part of my thought is if somebody's willing to serve, I hate to tell them no. If we got a vacancy, uh, and they vouched, was willing to step up, um, I mean, it's not like it's critical that we got to go, you know, right away. What's the other thoughts on that? Who else has a thought?
What district is it that they're filling?
Really step up? Or are they just feeling like they have to nominate somebody because there's an opening?
It's for District Four.
Right. So what I'm saying though is, are they, are they nominating somebody because they know there's an opening or did somebody really come to them and say, I want to do this? I mean, we all got nominated, but it doesn't mean we stepped up and.
Well, that's a good, that's a good question, Jennifer.
I mean, the supervisors already know there's a vacancy, so obviously they're gonna, you know, want to make a call, so.
And Jennifer, all right, you, didn't you say you're planning on moving?
Me? No.
Oh, I thought you had mentioned that at some point.
Unless y'all know something I don't.
All right, never mind.
That's how we get started.
Trust me.
I know that I wrote, the way the board stands now with the number of people, I rotate off next month. Who else rotates off?
I'm not sure when I rotate off. I'm District Four.
Ooh, somebody's got a mute.
There's a difference between your time being up and rotating off. It's not necessarily a requirement. Uh, if you're interested in the library, you can always stay on in my mind. I don't know. So what's the feeling on, uh, voting on this tonight or not?
Um, if, to me, we might as well, if Jill thinks we should vote, it would be good to vote on it. And if we're not going to change it at all before our next meeting, which is July, maybe we should just vote on it.
Sorry, but I don't. Right in front of me. Doesn't mention a.
What?
Does it specifically state the part about attrition? I don't have it right in front of me. Or does it just say the board will be one person from me?
Yeah, I don't remember how it was written either.
Tom, do you have it?
Yeah, um, it's pursuant to the requirements of the General Code of Virginia, the Board of Trustees of James L. Hamner Public Library shall consist of nine members, fifteen was crossed out, and then two bullet points, one from each district. And the second bullet point is four at large. And the rest of the section is still the same.
Yes, I would vote no on that language alone, just because it doesn't, it makes it seem like we're going to go in and knock it down right away. I think there needs to be some language that it will happen. All right, boy. Or something. Or in a moment.
I don't know if you can put that in the bylaws though, and I'm not a legal scholar on this, but, um, because like the, the bylaws are saying our current state is fifteen. And the new bylaws would say it's now nine. How we get from fifteen to nine, I don't think you write that in the bylaws. There's probably something else we have to do. I don't know, Jill, if you know what that is. But I don't think bylaws are used to say how you get from the old way of doing things to the new way of doing things. It just states, here's the new bylaws.
That was.
The bylaws are the vehicle for that.
Would it be an amendment?
That was my understanding. And then the how would be a procedure which you could write out or not. Or it could just be part of the minutes that you decided to do it by attrition was my understanding.
Okay.
But like Phil said, like if people would rather wait until July, when hopefully we're meeting in person, you know, nobody's going to die if we don't amend the bylaws tonight.
And Jill, we don't, like, you don't owe an answer back to the Board of Supervi-, like a decisive answer, yes or no, nominate this person. We can still say, hold off. We want to wait till we can meet in person to figure out, uh, more of the details. I mean, is it, is it okay to say that?
I would think so.
I would think so.
Okay. I mean, I, my personal feeling is like, I'm fine with the language, but I, based on this discussion, I think as a board, we probably need, um, to discuss how we're going to get there and agree on a way to document that how, um, uh, you know, in order for us to, to, to vote on this. I think if we voted on it and then we really don't know how we're going to get there, um, we're just leaving ourselves a little bit open to too much uncertainty right now. And I also think it's probably better to talk about this in person.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Tom. I, I guess part of my concern is we and somebody like Linda, her time comes up in July, while she wants to continue to be a part of the, you know, the Board of Trustees is a, is a key player, I'd hate to say, well, I'm sorry, your time's up, you're gone. So I mean, that's, I guess that's one of my.
That's okay.
Well, I've been, I've been honored to serve, but I, if, if I can, I would like to rotate off.
Sure.
For various reasons. But I know what you're saying, Phil. I understand.
And, uh, there's probably some people who, I can't think of anybody off the top of my head. I think some of those are gone now, but who never participated anyway, but they would stick around and then because of timing and, uh, so I don't know. I, I think, Tom, you're right. Let's, let's, uh, table until, or if you want, we can go ahead and vote on the, on the bylaws, but, uh, table any process discussions. How to, can we do that both ways or just wait and do them both at the same time? I would recommend doing both at the same time, but.
Because if you vote on the bylaws now, they would take effect at the next meeting. So if anybody's feeling hesitation, I think it would be best just to wait.
All right, well, let's do that. Let's table that and we'll come back to it in the next meeting. Next is the Evaluation Committee. Tom, you have anything with that?
No.
Uh, Budget Committee, Carol. Uh, Jill talked a little bit of.
Yeah, I have nothing else, Jill. You know, hopefully next year, maybe they'll, we can try again for the position. So if they didn't approve it, I mean, there's really nothing we can do.
I skipped over, uh, Critical Unnominating Committee. It's Jennifer and I, although I haven't done anything, uh, have you found somebody to take my place as a, uh?
Oh.
As a chair?
Nobody has come to me about it. Let me.
Okay. At some point, that's going to have to happen. Um.
What is the timeframe on that? Does that have to be July?
No, I don't think so. Uh, as long as I'm going to hang around.
What is your timeframe, Phil, at this point? When are you, when are you definitely leaving?
Well, I don't know. We're putting a house on the market probably mid to late June. And if it sells in a hurry, we're going to have to find someplace to live because the house we're building is not going to be ready until the end of September, so.
I saw your house on Facebook.
On where?
I thought I saw your house on the market already. I guess it wasn't yours.
No, there's one on, on, uh, in Bridgeford Mill at the other end of the lake, which is, uh, almost seven hundred thousand dollars. That's not my house.
Yeah, there was one on the water that I thought for sure was yours.
No, no, it was, uh, I hope it sells at that price though. That'll make my price look a lot better. But anyway, so I, I don't know. Uh, you know, things could happen quickly or, or not, but, uh, we'll have to see where it goes. Okay, well, table that. To, uh, facilities, anything going on with facilities, Jennifer?
From what I read in the paper, they took it away from us. Is anybody, anything? It looks like the CIP projects all got funded.
Got sucked up in the regular.
Yeah.
But it wasn't just us. It was pretty much everybody.
Yeah. So it looks like it was also not, unfortunately.
Anything from, okay, anything from public relations? All right. Have any old business? Okay, then we got new business is, uh, discussion on reopening restrictions. Uh, you want to kick that off, Gail, please? Or Jill, I mean, Jill?
All right, so this is where I need some guidance or consensus or just make sure we're all on the same page. There are a lot of options and as you know, this is a very contentious subject. There are some people who have expressed to me or staff that they think we are putting public health at risk by allowing items to be circulated. There are other people who have expressed the opinion that it's absolutely ridiculous that we are closed at all and not open for business same as normal. So, you know, we're trying to figure out how to best proceed. So my suggestion is that as long as Virginia is in the governor's phase one, that we continue as we are, close to the public. Staff are coming in Monday through Friday, ten to six, to provide contactless borrowing, curbside service. And if possible, staff are able to work from home if they want to, and it's possible for them to do work. Then when the governor puts us in phase two, we would go back to our normal hours. Then as long as at least three people can cover each shift, if somebody wanted to work from home, we would still provide them with that opportunity. We would still provide contactless borrowing, but have no public use of the meeting room and all in-person, you know, all library-sponsored in-person events would, have been canceled for the summer. And then this is where, you know, we could have some discussion. We could go so that we have just one computer open that patrons can come in and use, but we have the stacks closed to the public. We don't let the public go anywhere except right at the front desk and that computer. That way we could still provide copying and faxing and computer services, but on a very limited scale to make it easy to contain where any contamination might be and easy to clean. The other thought, if we didn't do that, is that we could open by a percent capacity of that main space. So not the lobby because people aren't going to hang out there and not the staff rooms because patrons aren't going to go back there, but just that main space where the stacks and the computers are. And I've been trying to figure out how to determine what the percent capacity would be or how we would even figure that out. And the closest answer I have gotten is somewhere I saw a library director say that their friend who manages a grocery store had this formula and I wrote down the formula, but I don't have that email anymore, so. a grocery store had this formula, and I wrote down the formula, but I don't have that email anymore, so I can't go back to that. But basically, if we did what the grocery stores are doing by hearsay, with two staff in the bill, in that main part of the building, we could have two patrons in there. So I don't know. I'm saying a lot of I don't know these days.
I'd love to know what grocery store is doing that. Just joking.
Like I said, I, I, I don't know. Um, I called over to the county to see if they had any guidance on percent capacity and I didn't really get a clear answer there. You know, not because they were being obstructive, just they didn't have an answer either. So I don't know. I can say that staff are very, very concerned, and the majority opinion that I have been receiving is if they had their way, we would stay completely close to the public and not do anything except for curbside service until Virginia was in Phase Three. I don't know that that's really the right way to go. Sorry, Gail?
Oh, I didn't see anything.
We lost her?
You have a comment, or?
I'm still here. This is
The employees, and I understand their concern. Any of them have, other than uh, Becky, have any bad health problems?
Um, you know, I want to be really careful where we go here, but
I mean, just generally speaking.
In general, they either have been personally impacted because family members have died from COVID, or they have family members who are immunocompromised. So this is of great concern to several people.
Hey, Jill, I was looking um earlier today at see what other library, public libraries are doing in Virginia. And the only thing I could find easily was Halifax County and Augusta County. And I think that they are um, not planning on physically opening the buildings to the public until Phase Three either. So, you know, I, I know that this is, you know, this is the toughest part of this whole thing, deciding how and when to reopen. I don't think there's any debate that it should reopen at some point soon. But how soon and how that happens is the tough part. I mean, absent any guidance from the county, I think the benchmark are what other public library systems are doing. Um, and I, I don't know if you have any information on that. All I could find was Halifax and Augusta. Both seem to be waiting until Phase Three to physically reopen buildings.
Yeah, so I do, libraries across the state have been in contact through this whole thing. And everybody is making a different decision. The localities that have had high numbers of cases are delaying openings. Those that have had low numbers of cases, some of them, you know, didn't even close as much as we did. It's really just so, so varied. Um, I, I can't remember the locality off the top of my head, but I know there is one or two localities that already, um, once we entered Phase One, already have opened on a limited basis. And I, if I'm understood correctly and I'm remembering correctly, they are opened to the point that people can come into their lobbies and then the main building is closed and people will bring out the things to them that they want. Um, you know, and other libraries have done things like, I know one system went in and completely redid all their public restrooms so that everything is touchless, which is like a huge expensive, right? So like, it's so varied based on what people are doing.
Well, Jill, what's, what's the advantage of someone coming into the quote uh, lobby desk area to get materials as to you all just doing curbside? I mean, what?
Um, if we did that, then we would be able to do faxes and copies for people. We're a little bit hesitant, not a little bit, we are hesitant to take people's documents, go in the building while they sit in their car, just because of, like, obviously, we are trustworthy, but we just don't want to open up a situation where people are uncomfortable with us taking their stuff.
I got you. I wasn't even thinking of copies.
Yeah, and the faxes are the big one. We've had several calls for faxes these past few weeks.
Yeah, okay.
That's one of those times where it's darn if we do, darn if we don't. You know, my personal opinion uh is this whole thing's overblown, uh, but uh, that doesn't necessarily what we base our decision on. It's a, you know, you go into Lowe's and uh, places packed with people, and you're lucky if you can find a parking lot, a parking space, or you can buy a birthday card at Hallmark, I mean, at Walmart, but you can't buy one at Hallmark. Right? It doesn't make any sense to me. So, you know, the advantage of individuals, if you're uncomfortable, well, then you don't go in the stores. The, the, to me, the hang up here is the employees, not the customers.
Mm-hmm. And, you know, I'm really concerned. You know, the world of libraries has changed, and the reality is, if you work in a library, you have to decide, am I willing to do this in a world that has a virus without a vaccine? You know, whether or not you believe it's true, this is pretty much the big picture that we have to consider. And so people who previously might have been comfortable, you know, working in flu season, now they have to really think, is this even a job that I want? So, you know, it's a really big deal.
As, as a nurse, I would err on the side of caution.
So Ruth, are you suggesting that we remain just curbside until we get to Phase Three?
I would, yeah. And I know that's maybe looked as being overly cautious, but I'd rather err on the side of caution than have something happen. And I think we need to wait and see with Phase One going on in other places, how's that affecting the amount of viruses being sent, with increase or an increase in virus? Let's see how it's going before we make a decision.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. See how this Phase One goes. Because there's so many variables and people are projecting this may happen, or no, that won't happen and so forth. And people becoming rather lax.
They're very lax.
Even more so now, now that there's been some, a little bit of freedom. People are letting their guards down, and I, I don't know.
So this is gonna be a little bit difficult to do electronically, but like, this is the main part of the meeting that I really need to know what you guys' um guidance is. So maybe what we should, could do is, one proposal is we stay closed, only do curbside until Phase Three. The other is we have just one computer station, very limited, like, only one person in the building at a time. We clean after they leave. And then we could either do a text vote, like, through the chat window, or Gail could call names and go along, because otherwise I don't know how you're gonna get a clear um, majority vote for whatever the motion would be.
Hey, Jill, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Could, the, the way that curbside is set up right now, with it being by appointment, maybe in like Phase Two, could you guys maybe consider for those who need, say, the faxes or copies, if you were to create some kind of appointment-based system, so that way you can still be closed, but allowing those who really truly need the services to be able to receive them in a set time, so that way it still allows the staff time to disinfect afterwards and, you know, do whatever necessary procedures in order to maintain, you know, the health and safety of everybody.
Possibly. Um, you know, I asked the attorney about letting, having library access by appointment, and he advised instead by building capacity. You know, percentage of building capacity. For faxes, the monitor, I believe, is still doing faxes. I haven't heard otherwise, and there is a place in Farmville that is doing it. So really, the biggest concern is for people who don't have internet access and are needing to do schoolwork or apply for jobs, figuring out a way to provide that to them, I think, would be the biggest concern.
So would it be possible then to, you know, to apply that and say, you know, maybe temporarily relocate one of the computer stations, so it's maybe closer to, you know, an entrance, so that it limits exposure, and then also, you know, have that be by appointment, so that way people have enough, you know, and allotted amount of time that they could meet those needs.
It's possible to some extent. Um, we're limited with the computers by where the data drops are for the internet, so it's not as flexible as we would like.
I understand.
So remind me again, Phase Two goes up to 50 people, right? We go from 10 to 50 in Phase Two?
I believe so. I don't, I don't have the slides up, but I believe so.
I guess I'm just wondering why it's all the way to Phase Three, is my, I guess my question. What's the big significant?
Because Phase Three is basically business as normal, and like Ruth and some others have expressed, there's a lot of concern that perhaps the government is moving too fast and we need to still be cautious.
Well, y'all better be thankful people work at Food Line, is all I'm saying. Had a single positive.
Food Line's a little different. I mean, everybody has to have food.
I know, I'm just saying. Had a single positive case.
Well, and then there's those of us who think the government's not moving fast enough, so it was always that side of the story. I mean, that's, you know, I, I like I say, my, my concern is not the public. Uh, I know that the staff is worried, and if they have some good reasons to be worried, then I'm concerned about the staff. But to me, if, if uh, somebody, and I, when somebody tells me, well, I'm afraid to go out, well, then stay in. Nobody's making you go out, you know? If you're, if you got a health problem, stay in. But even, and this age thing just drives me up a wall. Well, if you're 65, you gotta stay in. No, there's people 50 that are sick that need to stay in, and there's people that are 80 that are healthy, need to be out and about. So it's all arbitrary dates. The same thing with one or two or the third phase. It's all arbitrary. Oh, we gotta wait 10 more days? Who said 10 days, you know? It's all arbitrary information, so you know, I'm the wrong guy to lead this What's that?
It's uncharted territory. Nobody's sure what's
So I know it's uncharted, but who's, who's to say which way it goes?
Right.
Nobody knows.
I'm just, I mean, Phase Three, we could be looking at October. I mean, it's just no timeline.
No.
I just don't know, I don't know.
I don't know.
Jill, you don't, you don't do any faxing for anyone now?
I'm sorry?
You don't do any faxing?
No, ma'am, not right now.
Not right now? Well, you could try to the appointment, like the other ladies just said, because I know at the House Center, what they do, you call in, you make your appointment, and then when you go to your appointment, you call back in and stay in your car until they call you to come in.
Yeah, doing that, my wife went to the hairdresser, I was going to the hair, she had her nails done. And that was what, there, she had to wait, wait in the car. They called her when her time was and her clerk, uh, person was ready and they went in. And so I, I like the idea of appointments, uh.
But I feel like if we could do it in a hair salon, a nail salon, I don't understand why. I mean, to me, making a fax is even less personal than that.
Require people to wear a mask and
We can't.
Huh?
We can't require them.
Then they don't come in. No, you, you can't require
We can't stop them.
Sure, you tell them, they come in, they come in. They, they're doing that at the, they're doing that at the nail place. You gotta have a mask on to come in.
The attorney said we cannot require people to wear a mask.
There's a difference between private industry and government. We can't do it. That, I will say, that, that, that's where it's not apples to apples.
Man. I'm the wrong person to lead this discussion.
Off a piece of paper is not as personal as somebody standing around me coloring my hair for two hours either. I mean, I just feel like that's doable, personal.
And then there was the argument about who should wear the mask, whether it's a person that's sick should wear the mask, or the person that's healthy should wear the
I feel like it's gotta be tabled. We, I think it's a lot, a lot of ways. We're not, we're not, we, so
Here's a how much complaint are we we get, we get? Back or complaint?
What's happening? We are getting a lot of feedback. So um, if everybody can mute. Okay. Okay, so where we are at this past week, we have gotten a lot of frustrated calls. When are you going to be open? Why are you not open yet? So I really do need you guys to provide some direction so that we are all on the same page. And um, whatever you decide, I'll go, I'm meeting with staff tomorrow and we will figure out a way to implement it and do as much as we can to help staff to feel safe, even though, you know, if we do open up even by appointments for faxes or whatever, there is going to be some increased risk and there is going to be staff who are uncomfortable with that, but But I don't know that we are doing our jobs to provide for the public the services that they are paying for if we stay closed with just curbside service indefinitely.
Jill, for your staff, would the staff feel more comfortable if we had some sort of a barrier up along the desks so that there's a barrier between them and people? And if they provided with masks and with gloves when they're clean to be, you know, when they're cleaning to have gloves and stuff on and they're going to be touching things that other people have touched?
So they, I've always said that they are welcome to wear the masks. Some of them do, some of them don't. Again, I asked the attorney and I cannot require staff.
Yeah, but we can provide and have it there and then it's their option.
I'm saying the ones that are concerned, you would think would wear one. I mean, if that's, I'm just saying, if I was one of those people, then.
So, um, I have ordered sneeze guards for the front desk. They're our back order. So I don't know when we will get them, but I've ordered them. But that does not help when people need to, you know. Well, depending on what we do, if it's just faxes and copying, then we can manage because we can just tell people, you know, stay there behind the barrier and I'll go do your faxes. But if we open up and let people use the computers, we can't provide computer service and not provide computer help. And there is no way to provide computer help without getting extremely close. I have ordered some face shields for, it's one for each staff person because they said, they asked for it. And I, um, found a really, really good deal on them. I don't know what to say. Um.
Jill, what is, um, you mentioned there, there, there are people calling in frustrated, the library's not reopened yet. Have they been specific about what they're frustrated for? Because I sit here saying, I think it's perfectly, I, I am comfortable with, with opening for faxes and prints and printers and, you know, people calling in saying, hey, I'm out here in the parking lot, ready to fax something. And then, you know, we call back and say, okay, come on in or however you want to handle, whatever, whatever, whatever you all think is the right precautionary, uh, measures you have to take around that. Um, my concern about, you know, the, the one thing I'll say about the computers is, you know, computers are, computers and cell phones and like doorknobs are some of the dirtiest things in this world right now because especially public ones, because everybody's touching. And, and so like, do you think it would be a problem if it was like, we're, we're opening the facilities for printers and faxes? The wifi is still available in the parking lot. We have not opened for computers. Is that reasonable or are the calls a frustration about the computers?
It's probably about the computers.
Okay, that's all, that's enough.
Wait, but even if we had a plan so that we could tell callers, you know, we are closed right now. But when Virginia enters phase three, we'll be open. At least that would be some information and not just, I'm sorry, I don't know, we're closed until we say differently.
Would it be okay to say, um, we, uh, plan to be, uh, we will be open, uh, by phase three and between now and then. We, we will, we are, I don't know, considering some phase, some phase, I don't know, phase reopening is a terrible thing to say. Phases within phases. That's horrible. I mean, it, to me, I mean, you know, the, the few things that I've seen is that phase three seems to be, while not, it seems to be defensible. It seems to have the balance caution with giving an answer. Um, it may not be completely satisfactory to everybody, but at least it's a definite answer. Should we choose to do something before phase three? It's still, we're, we're still allowed to do that, even if we say, you know, we will, we will be open by phase three. We could choose to do it earlier. Should, um, circumstances break on the optimistic side? I mean, I mean, my, my, my feeling right now is, you know, without, you know, unfortunately, yes, I'm a data driven person. There isn't enough data about this to say which way is going to be the right way to do this. And the downside risks on both sides are not terribly, like one is we, if we open and wait too long, Jill is dealing with Jill and then eventually, you know, the board are just dealing with frustration from the county. If we open too early, you know, do we create another untenable downside risk with, contaminating the library? I, I don't know what the right answer is on this. I think the best defensible one is to say, we plan to be reopened by phase three. We'll inform you if, uh, um, you know, we have opportunities to open anything earlier than that.
So Tom, you're saying no faxes, no appointments for faxes or copies?
All I'm saying, like, if, if the, if the calls for frustration are largely around the computers, like me personally, like I would sit there like, I, I don't think, you know, opening for faxes and printers is, is that big of a risk to the staff or to any patrons. I don't think that's going to make a difference. Like, I think it's not going to make a difference in the sentiment based on what Jill's saying. What's frustrating people is they can't use the computers. And that's probably like the computers are, they're terribly hard to clean and they're not terribly clean to begin with. It's just the way computers are. So that, and, and, and being only able, uh, uh, being only to have, to Jill's point, like, if a patron needs computer help, it, it's pretty hard to socially, it's pretty hard to give help on a computer when you're six feet away.
Oh, I understand that. Yes.
So I'm just saying like, I don't see what the big, I don't see what we get, you know, in terms of, um, I don't see what kind of, you know, emotional capital we get by saying, yep, we're open for printers and faxes. But what you really want, we're still not open for. That's just all I'm saying. Like I, I don't know if we have much game. I'm, the way I'd say is, I'm indifferent. I don't think it'll make a difference based on what Jill's saying if we just open for printers and faxes.
And on the printers and fax side, I mean, currently I have staff who are willing to work in a closed building with, you know, just the same staff every day. So there's not any cross contamination. But if say maintenance guys come in, they'll ask if they can leave and work from home because somebody new came in. So, you know, if we open up to the public in any capacity, I mean, at some point, people just have to decide if they want to have the job under these conditions. But it is something to consider how very strongly at least 50% of the staff feel about not interacting with people.
So, so Jill, if they choose to work from home, what, what would they be doing? I, I don't quite get that.
Well, if we open to the public, that would not necessarily be an option for people anymore.
Right. I understand that.
But right now it depends on their position. The people who are able have been.
Whoa.
The people who are able have been working on the catalog. And so they've been cleaning up a lot of the records that were incorrect or had errors in them. Some of the other people like the front desk staff, they have gone in and done a lot of tagging. So for example, now if you wanted to find horror DVDs, you could click on the horror tag and get us a selection, which before you weren't able to do that because we didn't have the time to go in and add those tags. Some of the front desk staff have been working on filming tutorials for some of our online services. So if you like a YouTube instructional video, we're creating something similar to that for some of our things. So, you know, we've been finding useful things for them to do. I don't know how long we're going to be able to keep coming up with those things, but so far we have been able to be pretty productive.
Well, that's, that's great. I just was trying to figure out what all they could do remotely.
Here's my, my thoughts, I guess.
Phil, you can also use the chat window if you're having problems with your sound.
Where do I find the chat window?
Look, look under the number of particip, the list of the participant names and there's a box that says two. And then underneath it, there's the chat window. Also, you had joined the meeting twice and I just exited one of your joins. So you might have better sound now.
Okay, let's try it again. Two, two things. One, I, I, I would stay away from, well, we're open when stage three or whatever they call it hits. Knowing this governor, that may be November. We cannot stay closed until November. I don't, you know, it's just, I don't see that as a possibility. So I would stay away from arbitrary dates. My, my thought is, uh, do it by appointments for faxes and copies and maybe even passports. I don't see why we'd do it with passports. And, uh, then continue the curbside service, you know, and tell people, oh, we're, we're doing that till the end of May and we'll reevaluate. That's, well, anyway, that, that would be my approach. I don't know. What does everybody else think?
I agree. Beatrice?
Gail, what is your thought?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm sorry. Wow, I'm torn. I think we could maybe open only for faxes or copies by appointment and not computers. Or we could just continue as we are until we have time to meet properly and discuss this further.
Jennifer, what's your?
Feedback. I could not hear that.
I think he asked you.
What's your thoughts, Jennifer? I'm just trying to go around the horn, get people's opinions here. Some of us have given opinions, some haven't.
I'm sort of more like you, Phil. Um, but I do understand, like, if the complaints aren't about faxes and printers, then it really doesn't solve the problem. I'm fine with appointments for faxes and copies, but it doesn't sound like that's what the complaint she's getting is. So even if we do that, it doesn't sound like it's gonna really solve the issue she's having, I guess. Um, I mean, DMV just reopened to their computers. So maybe, um, there's somebody to look at. I was just trying to think of other people that have opened computers to the public that, and how they're going to deal with it. And DMV is one example I thought of. I'm trying to think who else has people coming in and using computers. Um, but I don't, I don't really have a good answer for that.
Who else has a thought that hasn't said anything about this?
But, um, no, I have a thought. I'm not trying to make light of this whole thing, but the entire, last time I checked, the entire county only had 18 cases and there's like 12, 13,000 people in the county. So the chances of somebody coming in are very, very slim. I think we need, that's something we might need to keep in mind.
Yeah.
The end of May, if we're saying something will, we know, till the end of May, I mean, that's like two weeks away.
I would ask for June 15th.
Oh, June 15th? Okay. Well, that would make more sense. That's about a month. But I, I mean, if we can do it by appointment, Jill, how much, I mean, if, if somebody comes in and uses a computer and it has to be cleaned, like how much time is that going to involve? Do you have any idea? Or could we say people have to wear gloves to use the computer?
We can't force people to wear gloves.
Okay.
Um, the cleaning part, we, this is all one assumption that we have a constant supply of cleaning supplies and that's not going to become a problem. It wouldn't just be cleaning the computer. It would be cleaning anything they had potentially touched. And then we would probably need to make it known that the restrooms are only cleaned once a day. Because based on marketing from other public places, people would probably expect it to be cleaned more often. And I don't see that realistically being able to happen logistically.
Okay. Well, maybe, maybe a sign could be put on the door stating that, you know, this restroom is only cleaned once a day so that if someone doesn't feel safe walking in, they wouldn't have to.
And it's, again, it's not like you're going to have a hundred people minutes to use the computer. So you make appointments a couple a day, not within an hour, two. And see how it goes, I think. I don't think it's going to be like rush hour. But that's just my opinion. It's not going to be like Virginia Beach is going to be this weekend.
Well, Jill, would there, would you set a timeframe for using the computer? I mean, I know some of them are going to come in for different purposes if it's available. But I don't know. I guess you would handle that through the appointments if you did it.
Yeah, I think what we would do is make a two hour appointment. That's about as long as it takes to fill out a job application, assuming you know what you, you're doing. It can take longer actually. And then we would probably give either 30 or 60 minute downtime in between.
Yeah, that would make sense.
But again, this means that we are going to have to tell staff, I'm sorry, you're just going to have to do your job or this isn't the right job for you. You know, once we open up to computer use.
Yeah, it's, it's a toughie. I know that the churches are, are, are dealing with certain issues. About if, if we're open, what happens if you, you know, if you want the, the parishioners, congregation, whatever, to wear masks or to sit in a certain spot and someone says, I either can't or I will not. And, uh, we have these dilemmas and I know some. And I know some people feel that it's crazy, it's ridiculous, just don't fool with it, but there are too many uncertainties right now. I think that you all could deal with the faxes and the copies by appointment rather safely. But, uh, it's been pointed out that your problem is with computers, so.
Well, even if we did open to faxes and appointments, I would at least be giving people something. So it might, it might not be meeting the greatest need, but at least it's an indication that we have the intention to move forward.
Yeah, and maybe with, with something saying, hopefully in the near future, we can begin to have some computers available, I, I don't know.
Jill, your idea of setting a day like June 15th or whatever, given a certain time period and, and continue the curbside service, you could open for faxes and, and copies or whatever by appointment and, but have a, a deadline. I kind of agree with what Phil said, that, that waiting till phase three kind of leaves it very nebulous. So if we had, it'll be, we, it will reconsider and, you know, whatever, as of June, by June 15th. We'll look at this again and, and reconsider or whatever. But if they have a deadline, I think it makes it easier if there is a certain, well, for this period of time, this is what we're gonna do and then we'll reconsider.
Okay, what about this? Let me just check the dates here. What, we said that we would be open to faxes by appointment starting June 1st and that we will reevaluate. And then when the executive committee meets on June 8th, we can see what we want to do and have the possibility that we would open for computer service on June 15th. And whether that was computer service by appointment or just some other method, we would figure out at that time.
And the thing about appointments is people that are really serious and happy to meet are gonna do that. I mean, so I don't think you're gonna be open, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I agree with that position, Jill. Uh, thought just through, went through my mind, what if the governor caves in and says, okay, everything's open on June 1st? Anyway, that's just a thought.
Well, if that happens, Jennifer, we would probably follow them, right?
We, we have to, that's right. But that's, that's a here and there, I think, I like your approach, uh, to, uh, through now to the 1st of June and we'll make a decision to go further than that, that sort of gives you at least some coverage and, but it also gives people, hey, we're moving forward, we just have to move forward at a reasonable pace.
So what I was thinking is, is we stay curbside only to the end of the month. June 1st, we start opening to faxes by appointment. We reevaluate on June 8th and hopefully open for computers June 15th.
Okay. Does everybody agree with that or any anti comments about that?
I agree.
I think it sounds good.
I agree.
Yep.
I agree.
I motion to.
All right, then that's, takes care of that right now. Any other old or new business? Do I have a motion to adjourn? I'm sorry, who?
I move that we adjourn. That's Ruth.
On the second?
A second.
Okay, we adjourned.
Thank you.
Everybody be safe.